Twenty. So I'll take just a moment to acknowledge those of you who are present this evening. And we will be, this will be considered a remote meeting. I'll say more about that when we introduce our public hearing. But Mr. Dellinger on the council is with us remotely, and there will be some other people who participate that will be also remote as well. So as is our custom, I'm going to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Behringer, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and she will also offer our invocation. So if you'll stand with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
You would join me in the invocation? Father God, we come humbly before you and ask for wisdom as we discuss issues and make decisions for the well-being of the town of Garner tonight. But what may be more importantly, we ask for your protection for our frontline workers, for your grace for those people who cannot be with their families, both servicemen and people here who, for the health and well-being of all concerned, who cannot celebrate the holidays with their families. We ask, Lord, that you give us the strength to make it through this pandemic and to come out on the other side whole. We ask these things in Jesus's name.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Behringer. And lest you all think that I forgot to have the clerk call the roll, I'm going to do that right now. So Ms. Gibson, if you will take care of that, I would appreciate it.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Vance?
Here.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a full slate of our council members here this evening. The next section of our agenda is petitions and comments. And I will not read all the information as it relates to that unless we have some persons here this evening who have either signed up in advance, or if you're here and wish to speak to the council under this section, now would be a good time to let us know. Ms. Gibson, did we have anyone sign up to speak at this time?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. So other than those of you who may be here for public hearings that we'll be having, are there any others who wish to comment at this time? Okay, thank you very much. The next item, council, is the adoption of the agenda. I think you all have that on your laptops or in hard copy. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. So if you will, Madam Clerk, call the roll on the approval of the agenda.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Uh, yeah, aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Thank you, and as so ordered. Next item is presentations as a general heading. And I'd like to recognize our town manager, Mr. Dickerson, who will be sharing information in regards to a committee that was put together a little sometime back. And he will explain and give us a report from the committee. Mr. Dickerson?
All right, and I will wait for, do I, I click, okay, I'll click it on, all right. Let me put my presentation up there. All right, Mayor, Town Council, it is my honor to report back to you on the Juneteenth Committee that was formed in September. Our committee members are on, joining us by teams remotely tonight, and they will all join in on the presentation. So I will be advancing the slides, but you're going to hear from a number of folks, and the next slide will kind of tell you who they are. Before we get started, I'm going to click this button And as you can see, the logo just came forth. That's the logo. It was designed by Rachel Lane in our Parks and Rec Marketing Division. And we're very proud of that. And you're going to see that going forward as we make plans to celebrate, recognize, and educate the Garner citizens on Juneteenth. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Ben Acton of First Presbyterian Church of Garner, and he will start off our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Can someone just let me know that I'm coming very clear?
You're good.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Town Council. I just want to begin, before we get into some of our slide shows, by saying for myself, and really on behalf of the entire committee, how grateful we are as this Juneteenth Committee to be before you this evening, and to have this opportunity to share with you the work we have done. Because you had a willingness to engage and explore questions about what Juneteenth is, and how we as Garner might celebrate it in our own unique way, this pivotal moment in American history, that we are here, that the mayor was empowered to gather folks together to form this committee. And on the next slide, I believe, we can see the members of that committee. You see them there, a wide swath of different folks in our community, not only represented on the council and in government and in town staff, but a plethora of community members, many of whom you will hear from tonight as we share our presentation. This reflects the collaborative effort that this Juneteenth Committee was given as a charge, and that we implemented as we went on. And on a personal note, as someone who's probably the newest resident of Garner, my family and I moved here in the middle of 2018, I must say I have been just personally impacted and touched by the intentionality with which Garner has approached this topic of Juneteenth, and of just how we've gone about our work in trying to figure out how we can continue to be the all-American town that we are, and continue to uphold values that matter to people in our community. So I'm very thankful to have been part of this committee, and to be with all those you see before you on the slide as part of a collaborative effort. We'll go to the next slide. There we go. Mr. Dickerson is not only an expert at getting slides moved around and put together, but he also really kind of helped keep us on track, reminding us of our meetings and setting those up. I know with the help of other town staff and setting up remote meeting possibilities. You see, there are scheduled how we met regularly, monthly, and how we kind of broke down the work before us. Before figuring out how to celebrate Juneteenth, our group wanted to explore the history. And you'll hear more about that in just a moment. And then to see if there was any history in Garner with Juneteenth. Was there anything going on already that would help us not have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak? And then, if there was, or if there wasn't, what other things might we add and celebrate for Juneteenth, especially in this time of COVID-19, where we're so excited that there are vaccines now available, but still there's much uncertainty about how often we might be able to gather and be face to face to observe different celebrations and things like that. And then the other thought was too, how can we make this a sustainable event? How can we grow this observation over time? You'll see a theme emerge that we hope to have a time this first year where education and awareness is the key, in which we're not going to ask for a particular town holiday, but where we want to educate people, make them aware of it, grow some consensus and awareness of how important this day is, and then perhaps look for ways we can grow and expand that over time. And so at this time, I'll pass it on to our next leader to continue this collaborative work and let you know what our research showed us about Juneteenth.
And I believe Ms. Ernestine Durham is up, and we're not hearing your audio right now.
Oops. Can you hear me now?
Oh, we got you.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll be covering history and origins, the national and local observation, and what we've been able to find out how it was celebrated in Garner. So I'm going to start with the history. Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. It was on June 19, 1895, that the Union soldiers, led by Major General Barton Branger, landed at Gallowston, Texas, with the news that the war had ended and that enslaved was now free. Now, this was a full 20 and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had been, become official January 1, 1863. In the early years, little interest existed outside the African-American community and participation in the celebrations. And in some cases, there were outlet exhibited resistance by barring the use of public property for these festivities. Most of the festivities found themselves out in rural areas throughout rivers and creeks that could provide for additional activities such as fishing, park bike riding, and barbecues. And often, church grounds was a site of such activities. Eventually, as African-Americans became landowners, land was donated and dedicated for these festivities. Although there are some accounts of Juneteenth activities being interrupted and halted by white landowners demanding that the laborers return to work. But most allowed their workers the day off, and some even made donations of money and food. For decades, these annual celebrations flourished, growing continuously each year. But economic and cultural forces led to declines in Juneteenth activity and participants beginning in the early 1900s. Classroom and textbook education in lieu of traditional home and family taught practices further stifled the interest of youth due to less emphasis and detail on the lives of former slaves. Classroom textbooks proclaimed Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation of January 1, 1863, as the date signaling the end of slavery. And little mention or nothing was made of the impact of General Branger's arrival on June 19. The Depression forced many people off the plantations and off the farms into cities to find work. In these urban environments, employers were less eager to grant leave to celebrate this date. Thus, unless June 19 fell on the weekend or holiday, there was very few participants available to celebrate. July 4 was already the established Independence Holiday, and rising participation steered more toward this celebration. The civil rights movement of the 50s and 60s yielded both positive and negative results for Juneteenth celebrations. While it pulled many of African-American youth away and into the struggle for racial equality, then it linked these struggles to the historical struggles of their ancestors. Then in 1968, Juneteenth received another strong resurgence through the Poor People's March to Washington, D.C. Ralph Abernathy's called for people of all races, creed, economic level, and professions to come to Washington to show respect for the poor. Many of these attendees returned home and initiated Juneteenth celebrations in areas previously affected of such activities. Today, Juneteenth is enjoying a phenomenal growth within communities and organizations throughout the country. Institutions such as the Smithsonian, the Henry Ford Museum, and others have began sponsoring Juneteenth-centered activities. In recent years, a number of local and national Juneteenth organizations have arisen to take their place alongside older organizations, all with the mission to promote and cultivate knowledge and appreciation of African-American history and culture. During Juneteenth, we acknowledge the African-American spirit and pay tribute for the roles and contributions which have enriched our society. Next slide, I think. Celebration. Juneteenth today celebrates African-American freedom and achievement, while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. Arranged activities were held to celebrate the event, many of which continue today. Guest speakers are brought in. Elders were called upon to recount the events of the past. Rodeos, fishing, barbecues, and baseball all research for a few of typical Juneteenth activities that you may witness today. Prayer services were also a major part of the celebration. Many cities and states across the U.S. and beyond are realizing the opportunity to come together in appreciation, reconciliation, and commemoration. Juneteenth celebrations are now held in most, if not all, 50 states. Over half have passed on form of legislation establishing Juneteenth as a special day of recognition. Several others have similar legislation intended. The recognition and honor of Juneteenth extends even beyond our borders. It is now celebrated in over 20 different countries. And various celebrations are held in North Carolina to commemorate Juneteenth. Charlotte, Carver, Cary, Catting County, Durham, to name a few. These events run the gamut from festivals to lunch and learns, roof truck rodeos, cookouts, family days, historic walks through historic parks, plantations, as a few. Unfortunately, from my contacts with some of the more older Black citizens in Garner, Garner did not seem to celebrate or recognize this event. Neil?
Thank you, Ernestine. Yes, I'm Neil Paget, lifelong resident of Garner since the 1950s. I was not even aware of the term Juneteenth until recently. So as Ernestine was saying, we on the committee wondered what the history in Garner was for Juneteenth. We asked the Garner Area Historical Society and local citizens and local churches. We don't know that Juneteenth has ever been recognized or celebrated in Garner. There is some recognition of January 1 as the date of the Emancipation Proclamation, but not So why should we recognize Juneteenth in Garner? First, Garner is an all-American city that values diversity and inclusiveness. Second, Garner has been a multiracial community since day one. Freed slaves played a critical role in Garner's origin and early development. Garner's first known businessperson was Henry Fort, a freed slave. His business was where Hayes Chapel is currently located. Freed slaves started Wake Baptist Grove Church, probably Garner's oldest existing homegrown institution. It dates back to 1867. Third, Garner already affirms the American creed that all men and women are created equal. We express this in our July 3 celebration and our Martin Luther King celebration. Juneteenth awareness would represent a missing link, the link between our current celebration of independence on July 3 with the acknowledgement that work has been necessary and continues to be necessary to make the creed apply to all Americans. Melanie?
Thank you, sir. Greetings, everyone. I'm Melanie Payden. So good to be with you all tonight. I represent my family, my husband, Reverend Antoine Payden, my two children here. We love Garner, and we are also representing the Glen Creek neighborhood community. So thank you for having us here. How will we observe Juneteenth in Garner? So I'm just going to kind of talk to you guys through these slides. I'm not going to read everything there. But we understand Juneteenth to be the proclamation of freedom for African-Americans. And so because of what you've heard so far, so many folks just not being aware of what it really is and the significance that it has to African-Americans, we as a committee have come up with some ideas for consideration, some concepts for you all to hear me share and think through with us. So first of all, we know that because of COVID, there wouldn't be a big single event that we're looking to kick off this coming year. We know that we're not just ready for that holiday as well. So what we're asking about is an opportunity to share awareness, to increase folks' awareness, and express the significance of Juneteenth. And so we have some ideas around how that can happen. So if you'll advance that slide. So we have with us Pastor Ben Acton, who is a part of a faith-based organization. I think Mr. Behringer that's on this committee as well, sits there on Town Council. He's also a part of other organizations that will be able to help us get the word out. How will that look? We want to ensure that information is shared throughout the community in a relevant kind of a way, so that folks don't feel as if you're trying to beat them over the head with something new. So how do we do that? Making sure that we have community information that's out. We reconnect back to Garner's history, a very multicultural, diverse population of folks, with a deep-rooted history in the African-American culture. So we'll advance a little bit. In talking with our clergy, our hope is that whatever communications, literature, information, video blurbs, or websites we create, that we would have a base of folks who are interested, who've bought into the vision of expanding Garner's awareness of Juneteenth and its importance, we would have those folks to partner with us to share information, lift up the importance, have our church members, our pastors, youth organizations as well, share this information far and wide in Garner. That would lead us up to what we consider Juneteenth Freedom Day. There's this buildup between June 19 and July 3. So we understand the big celebration here in Garner. Between then, as we build up folks' awareness, as we get them more involved with a clearer understanding what Juneteenth is and why it's so important, we want to take this time to share with them information. We want to kick off what Juneteenth really means to so many of our African-American citizens, town folks here in Garner. And by doing that, we would ask our churches, our youth organizations, we would ask our local businesses to help us promote Juneteenth, so that as folks become aware, as they're more informed, we can see this thing take off in Garner. And then we're working towards getting a video rollout. So there'll be a blurb about Juneteenth and what we've been working on in the MLK video. That'll be ready in January. We're thinking a more robust, a richer production will be ready by February, so we can share that. So again, ideas for consideration. Can we get a website up and running, or can we share media blurbs on any outlets that we may have around Juneteenth? And in doing that, we would better inform our community members. We even thought this, what if Town Council members, this Juneteenth Committee member of folks, if we purchased yard signs? If I promoted it in my neighborhood, if there was another neighborhood where we could really promote, pulling in our schools as well. So that's just an idea for consideration. And then incorporating the arts will be very important for us. So whether it's art downtown, whether it's display that we can put up, that we can take out, take down, whether it's something more permanent, and then performing arts with so many of our local performing arts groups here in Garner, we want them to help us promote Juneteenth. What is it? What does it mean to our children? And then visual arts. We have some phenomenal artists who've already done some great work for us here in Garner. How can we get them involved? And then all of our youth organizations from schools, are we asking our former history teachers, current history teachers, to just share information? We know that this is June, right? So a period of time when school may be in, if you're year-round, depends on what happens with COVID, if schools are not in. How can we better inform our school-age students? That's where we would look for the partnership with all of our youth programs and organizations here in town. And I spoke already about those yard signs. I think Mr. Dickerson and I talked about, and in committee we may have lifted this up, about whether we purchase yard signs and then sell them for profit, or if we have them as just advertisement, so that folks are more aware of Juneteenth. That next slide, please. And I think, I'm hoping this is where Mr. Dickerson jumps in. I'm pretty sure.
Yes. Thanks, Ms. Payden. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I'll jump in. So you've heard a lot of good things, a lot of good ideas, some things that still need to be fleshed out. But I think we've got a good foundation for what could be the next kind of big celebration in Garner. But in the near future, what we want to do is just have outreach and education, talk to, you know, churches, civic groups, schools, youth, businesses. We want to get all of Garner involved. This is not just a celebration for African-Americans. It's a celebration for all Garner residents and citizens and business, and anybody else associated with Garner. So I'm going to call on Council Member Dellinger for any closing remarks before we go to any questions from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson, and thank you to all my committee members, and thank you for the mayor for forming the committee. It's been a great experience so far being on the committee. Everyone has learned something. And I think that one of the things that emerged is really a reflection on Garner and its values, and how we already celebrate freedom and independence in Garner with our July 3 celebration, and that Juneteenth is sort of an extension of that celebration of independence. It's sort of an acknowledgement that independence didn't come from everyone on July 4, but that history teaches that it evolves over time. So the committee's great, and it's been a great experience working with all of them, and looking forward to continuing to grow the awareness and education about Juneteenth in Garner, not just next year, but over the years to come as well. So thank you.
All right. That is the conclusion of our presentation. Our formal remarks. Now just open it up for any feedback or questions from the council, mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start by making a few observations and comments. First of all, I want to thank our town manager, who was willing to take on an extra duty amongst all of his other duties when I talked to him about maybe chairing this committee. And then we worked together on putting together these committee members. And committee members, I want to thank you personally, and thank you on behalf of the town for the good work you've done. I'm excited about the proposals that you're making. I think it will help us all to have a better understanding of our history, a portion of our history that's been neglected and is not understood by many of our citizens, I believe. The only regret I have for your presentation this evening is that you were not here in person, so I could see you and congratulate you. But I understand fully why that is not the case. So thank you for helping us remotely in a virtual setting like this. But I've known most of these committee members for some period of time. Most of them are quite engaged in our town and community, and they represent various across sections of our community. So thank you so much for the good work that you've done. So now I'm going to see what comments or observations our council members want to make and/or any questions they may have. So I'll begin by starting with Mayor Pro Tim Behringer for any comments or questions.
This is, this is really good to see. Way overdue, but at least we're catching up. And in this day of modern technology, even though we can't have everybody here to see them in person, at least we can see you, and we can have the presentation. We don't have to postpone it. I appreciate your hard work, and I look forward to seeing where we go with this and how quickly we move.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Vance, I'll recognize.
Well, yes. But through the committee, thank you for the information and the effort that you're putting forth for this endeavor. I think that is a worthy endeavor. And just want to And just want to know if, I guess it's a question for the town manager, if this slideshow is available for distribution?
Sure, it is. We'll put some information together and get it posted.
Okay.
We wanted to reveal our logo so we didn't hand it out ahead of time. But we'll get it to you.
All right, again, thank you for your efforts and look forward to seeing more.
Okay, and, okay, thank you. And Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I want to thank everyone on the committee for taking the time to work on this, the meetings that you had, working together, collaborative effort. I like your approach, the approach of educating folks because, I mean, a lot of us didn't know. I've heard about Juneteenth before, but this year really became more evident with many of the issues that happened earlier this year and through the summer. So I think the way of educating people about it and letting people know why it's worthy of taking the time to learn about it and also to celebrate it. And also to tie it in to celebrate from June 19th until July 3rd is all a celebration of freedom, freedom of American citizens. So thank you for your time and effort and I look forward to, I think you said you're going to have your presentation, something you're going to have, try to have, sometime maybe into February.
Right, we'll try to have a promotional video out in February.
That's great. Thank y'all.
Okay, and Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on what all y'all have accomplished here. Obviously, you put a lot of effort in and a lot of research. And as Ms. Singleton said, so many people are not aware of what this is all about. And I think the approach of educating the public is probably one of the most important things you can do. And it sounds like you guys are quite organized and look forward to hear more about it. So congratulations and good luck. And we wait to see what you bring next.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you for those comments, mayor, town council. So we don't need a formal vote or anything. We just need to make, we just want to make sure you endorse some of the steps that we want to take next and that the mayor continues to give us the charge to go forward.
Okay, yes, and that is what I want the council to consider doing. And that is basically to endorse the recommendation that you've brought here and the continuing work that you will do. So if I can get a signification, either a nodding of the head or a thumbs up from council? Yes, okay, that's unanimous. There he is, y'all, Mr. Dellinger. Okay, I see you. Thank you. You certainly have the council's recommendation. And I look forward to how this will all come together. I know it's going to be mentioned at the Martin Luther King Day Celebration and through other venues as well. It's good to see you again, Ms. Payden, as well. So thank you all. Good job. And I'll take a moment to wish you all a happy Merry Christmas and even better 2021, okay? So keep up the good work and we'll catch you on the other side of the holidays, all right? Thank you very much.
Before I take my seat, Mayor Marshburn, I do want to thank the committee for all their hard work and helping put this together in a short amount of time. And then also Rick Mercer and Lori at the GPAC. Thank her for all of her efforts in helping us to get some of these things together. Lori Clark and some of the logo and all of those things that we had help with from staff.
Sure, okay. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for everything. Okay, thank you, committee. We'll be talking to you, okay? Well done. Okay, the next item on our agenda now is the consent agenda. Council, you're aware that there are four items on the consent agenda. And so unless there is a question or concern, I would entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any questions or concerns before we vote? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you will, again, call the roll on this vote.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The vote is unanimous and is approved. We will now go to the section of our agenda that is headed up with a public hearing. And so the one public hearing we have this evening is CUP SP 1927 Ran Village Commercial. I will make some further explanation. But first of all, if you are a witness here in the courtroom, I need you to be sworn in by the town clerk. And also those of you who are virtual, we'll ask that you be sworn in as well at this particular time. So, Madam Clerk, I guess technologically, can we get everybody on the screen who is to be sworn in?
For those that are testifying from home, if you could please state your name before you acknowledge that you've been sworn, I'd appreciate that so we have it for the record. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you.
I do. Wyatt Dohm.
Nate Thompson.
Stacy Griffin.
Eric Frans.
Jeff Trevenberg.
Okay, thank you.
Abby Lontoslawler. I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Sessions Law 2020-3. And as has been noted, Councilmember Dellinger is participating virtually as he is doing this already. I'll note that whenever he cannot be seen on the screen, he will identify himself by name prior to asking questions and participating in deliberations or making motions and proposing amendments and voting. And of course, this is what applies to what we're about to do now. For all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing. And those should be submitted, written comments, by email to s gibson at garnernc.gov. And now we'll note, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. All persons who have standing to participate must indicate whether or not he or she consents to the remote meeting prior to speaking or giving testimony. And I'll try to remember to ask each person who's to speak if they do so. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. And so I will now ask council members, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communications? Have you had any, do you have any close familial, business or other associational relationships with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? If such would be the case, you should acknowledge that now. Any by council members, okay, thank you. All right, this is a fact-finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety and other, excuse me, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. Okay, I'm going to formally and officially open the public hearing. And we will hear from our first presenter, which I believe is Ms. Stacy, is that correct? Or is it Jeff?
It's me.
Okay.
Give me a second and I will get the PowerPoint pulled up as well.
Do I need to ask her? Stacy, while you're doing that, I need to ask you the question if you consent to this being a remote hearing.
I do.
Okay, thank you. You may, you may go right ahead with your presentation then. Thank you.
Good evening. You have before you tonight Ran Village Commercial site plan. This is CUP SP 1927. The applicant in this case is Cambridge Properties LLC, who is also the owner. This location is along Fayetteville Road and 1010 Road and is approximately 26.92 acres. The planning commission did review this at their November 16th meeting. Again, 26.92 acres. And what you will see on the accompanying site plan is there are three uses. One is a wholesale retail use and that is a little over 155,000 square feet. There is a gas station with a small employee area of 186 square feet and there are nine pumps. And there's also a restaurant on the site plan at this time that is 5,188 square feet. The property is already zoned and those are your setbacks there. You did previously see this as a conditional use subdivision plan where the parcels on the, this side of 401 were done for commercial and then the parcels on the other side of 401 along Caddy Road were done for multifamily. You will see the multifamily project coming before you, I believe, next month, mid-month. This is the site plan that's been submitted for the commercial site plan. The area noted with the one is the wholesale retail use and the pumping parking. The gas station use would be to the right of that. It is not numbered because it is part of that same parcel. But that's the furthest northeast on this site plan. The restaurant use is located adjacent to where the number two is on this site plan. The parcel one, the wholesale retail use, these are examples of the building facades. The building will be constructed of brick and pre-finished metal panels, as you see here. This is what the gas station will look like that accompanies that. And this is an example of what the restaurant will look like that is on that parcel noted by the two. This building will be primarily constructed of masonry, as you see there. There is no open space required with this project because it's a commercial development. For landscaping, the plan calls out 14.89% tree coverage, which exceeds the requirement of 10%. There are perimeter buffers around the property ranging from 15 feet wide to 45 feet wide. There's a street buffer of seven and a half feet along US 401 and 15 feet along 1010 Road. There are street trees provided every 40 feet on average along both frontages as well as the internal drive. The lighting for the site has been shown in conformity with the video as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have a zero uplight, low glare and warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved this plan. For parking, I've kind of broken it down again by that parcel one and parcel two. Parcel one has the wholesale retail and the gas station on the parcel. In this case, we would require 778 spots for the wholesale retail use. The applicant is proposing 721 and they are requesting a 7.3% reduction in required parking. The gas station would only require one spot and they're proposing none. They're proposing that the attendant who works at that gas station will park in the wholesale lot. Parcel two for the restaurant has one spot for every three seats. That would yield 47 under our requirements and they have provided 58. The site does not contain FEMA-designated floodplain. For stormwater, Ran Village is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10 and 25-year storm events. This plan proposes a wet retention pond and level spreader with vegetated filter strip to treat impervious surface from the development. These devices will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements at this site for nitrogen, the 85% TSS removal, and will detain the 1, 10 and 25-year storm events. A nitrogen offset payment will also be required for this development. The development will connect to the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer. Frontage improvements were approved as part of the conditional use subdivision that I mentioned earlier. But just as a reminder, those did include westbound 1010 to be widened and curb gutter and sidewalk installed. Additional right-of-way will be dedicated there. Westbound 1010, a dedicated right turn lane will be provided for the site driveway. On eastbound 1010, a dedicated left turn lane will provide access. US 401 will be widened and curb gutter and sidewalk will be installed within the existing right-of-way. And a dedicated right turn lane from southbound 401 will be installed at each driveway. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Fayetteville Road as a six-lane divided arterial and 1010 as a four-lane divided facility. The plan does not provide any recommendations for pedestrian or bicycle facilities. With the previously approved roadway improvements, this project may be considered consistent with the recommendations of the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. A review of the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan revealed no plan recommendations in the project-specific area. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with their plan. After sufficient review and plan revisions, staff finds that this project, as now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. One, prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to the town of Garner. Two, prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. Three, prior to issuance of a building permit, a recombination plat must be approved and recorded at the Wake County Register of Deeds. Four, construction drawings submitted to the Engineering Department and City of Raleigh Public Utilities will be required. And five, all public road improvements to include sidewalk, curb gutter and road widening on 1010, southbound 401 and the US 401 median shall be completed prior to the first commercial certificate of occupancy being granted in keeping with the original subdivision approval. The planning commission did review this request at their November 16th meeting. By unanimous vote, the planning commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 7 that CUP SP 1927 Ran Village Commercial is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. You do have suggested motions on page 34 of your packet as well. And the applicant is in council chambers with you and does have a presentation of their own. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time or they might can answer those as they go through their presentation as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin. And I will see if council has any questions for you at this time. And then the applicant also may certainly have an opportunity to answer a question. I'll start with Mr. Vance to my right, if he has any questions.
I have no questions.
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I just have one. The required parking spaces were 778 and they're proposed with 721, which is a reduction of 57 spaces. What was the justification for asking for the reduction?
The applicant does have a study of what that particular wholesale retail use generally needs. So they can talk about that as they go through their presentation as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dellinger, I will recognize you at this point for any questions.
Just a quick clarification question because I think it said there are no pedestrian or bicycle improvements. But there will be the sidewalk along 401 on the frontage. Is that correct?
Um, yes. Along 401, be widened with curb gutter and sidewalk. Along 401, be widened with curb gutter and sidewalk installed within existing right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Only question?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Mr. Matthews?
Not this time.
Okay, Ms. Singleton?
I have the same question Ms. Behringer had in regards to the parking, so we'll let the fellow answer that question for us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. I believe that covers everybody. Anybody thought of one in the meantime? Thank you, Ms. Stacy, for your excellent presentation. And I will now recognize persons who are prepared to testify for the applicant. If you will identify yourself, your name and address, please, sir.
For the record, Jay Priester, 831 East Morehead Street, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28202. And consent to the virtual hearing as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Town Council, for allowing me to speak with you this evening. With this being a quasi-judicial hearing, we do have expert witnesses to testify to the 10 findings and the criteria of the ordinance. However, we do not have a specific testimony because we do not have any opposition from staff. We actually just obviously heard their support in our meeting, the UDO. Secondly, Town Council, in the event that you all have questions, we do have expert witnesses here to address it. And then lastly, is if there's any genuine issues expressed by the community or other people who may have concerns with this project. We have not heard of any thus far. In addition, we also, as not required under the ordinance, but we chose to do a voluntary community meeting, as if it was required under the ordinance for, like it would be for a subdivision or for a rezoning. We went ahead and followed those same guidelines and also reached out to some additional neighbors who wouldn't fall within the purview of the notifications. We did hold the first meeting on August 24th. That was done virtually. The notices for those two meetings were mailed out in late July, July 27th, I believe. So the 24th was the virtual meeting of August. And the 25th, we had a in-person live meeting at the church located across the street from our project on 1010 Road. We did have one person show up to the meeting. It was a property owner who lives down Caddy Road. So it'd be across to the east side, excuse me, yeah, the east side of 401. And he was very supportive of the project. He had recently purchased a home in the community there. And just, and we had had a couple other conversations with him throughout the time that we've owned this property, all very supportive. So we do have expert witnesses to address any questions that council may have. However, I would like to introduce our expert witnesses to the council and then jump into a brief presentation of our project and then allow specific questions. So joining me with, from Cambridge Properties here is Barrett Blackburn, professional engineer, is an employee of Cambridge Properties. We also have here Jeff Hokanadl, who is with Timmons Group. He's present here this evening. He performed our traffic impact analysis for this project. And then remotely, we have Wyatt Bone with Bowler Engineering. He is one of the two engineers of record for the onsite improvements for this project. The second engineer is Julie Miller with AEC. They are, do most, if not all, of the Costco-specific site engineering. And I'll talk a little bit more about those specifics as we get into the presentation. We have Eric Brand with Costco, who runs the pre-development and development side of Costco. We also have a representative who works on the development team within Chick-fil-A, Nate Thompson. And then lastly, we have Costco's architect from MG2, Steve Warfield, also available virtually. Start with the macro approach of our property and how we view development. It's important to know how we are here tonight and, you know, have had such good communication with our neighbors. Is, we've got three, or actually four projects shown on the site plan here on the aerial. And we started out with the one we're here in front of you tonight and then started to approach our adjacent property owners and share our plans with them, what we intend to do. And naturally, that incurred, well, hey, we may be interested in selling, why don't we talk about it? So we jumped across this 1010 Road, which is the dividing line into Fuquay Varina, and we're under construction with a project there called Royal Creek. And, which is primarily residential, a very small amount of commercial. Of course, going to the east side of 1010 down Caddy Road, which came in front of your council earlier this year for rezoning, are two pieces zoned for multifamily. We've also had very good contact with our adjacent neighbors to the west. So going down 1010 Road, you'll see a traffic signal located there. We worked very hard to get that because our property did not originally line up with the opposing street across the road there called, formerly known as Daddy Road, now known as Chalice Lane. And what we were able to do was create further spacing between the traffic signals to meet NCDOT standards. And by doing that, we entered into a very complicated land swap agreement with that property owner. They had some dimensionality challenges with the depth. So what we did was, we said, all right, we'll build the road, we'll build the traffic signal, and then provide some cross-access easements across that property. And it benefits the both of us. And then we also, very similarly, there's an existing Advanced Auto Parts Walgreens and Sheets on the corner. And we've entered into cross-access easements with them, which allows very good and strong interconnectivity. I'll jump into the road improvements slightly, not to be redundant to the rezoning that you hit, heard earlier this year. But again, just wanted to show the forthcoming of the 540 to 540 coming in the proximity to our site. We think that's very important to the strategic location of not only our site, but also future traffic patterns. So in blue, you'll see the existing 1010 Road. And that's very important to note that a lot of the through traffic that may be coming from Cary going to Johnston County or Holly Springs will now be able to relieve 1010 Road, and which benefits us so that we have more local traffic that will actually stop and patronize the tenants at our shopping center. Stacy did a very good job of explaining our road improvements again. So I'm going to skip over the verbiage and go straight to a diagram, hopefully providing a little bit of visual clarity. So I'll start on 1010 Road. That's going up and down on your screen there. Our site is on the right. The road, the new additional roads are labeled in green. Those are for this project specifically. That's a combination of some restriping on 1010 Road, as well as adding another through lane through there. So we're adding a restriping, adding the lane, going to the traffic signal, and then also have an opposing left turn to be able to come into our site from the traffic signal. You also see, it's a little bit faint, but we do have the sidewalk shown in blue. That is on both sides of the road. The blue sidewalk on the left side of the screen next to Chalice Lane is being done in conjunction with the Fuquay Varina project called Royal Creek. Actually, just finished that up, finishing it up in the next couple of weeks in terms of that portion of road improvements. Jumping down on 401, I'll go to the green road there. That is a new road that we'll be constructing. That is a through right turn lane. So eventually, this meets the requirements of this side of the road of NCDOT of that total of six-lane cross-section. We also will be connecting with the sidewalk at Sheets. That's located there today and extending that across the entire frontage of our property, including the street lights that we'll be adding and street trees and the planting strip. So as staff mentioned, we are here tonight with two components of our site plan. The first one is the larger store on 22 acres. That is Costco. And then the second component is on the, what we call parcel four, and that is Chick-fil-A. There are three remaining out parcels that will come in front of your, in front of council again, as those site plans develop. So we're hopeful, again, we'll be back here next year to present those specific plans. This is a little bit more technical of the site plan showing that, but I'll skip through that. And I wanted to be able to point out the landscape plan for the project. I think it's important to note, and this goes to, as when I presented some of our expert testimony who are available to speak, but Julie Miller with AEC, and how I mentioned Costco has a very specific engineering firm to really address their level of criteria, including their landscaping. So you'll see in light gray, and I apologize that this is a little bit tough to see. Light gray is the ordinance landscaping required. The darker gray is our supplemental, additional landscaping that we have elected to do here above the code minimum, specifically related to the Costco parcel. Jump through. Stacy did a great job. These elevations are very specific to meet the zoning requirements, which we agreed to of the minimum of 50% masonry. And then recently, this is the fuel center that Stacy showed, but originally, we did not have the canopy columns. So the gas canopy columns were not all brick. So we were able to bring all those full brick on the canopy, as well as the manned kiosk. That will be masonry as well. The questions about the parking, wanted to address those. As Stacy did mention, we did submit, as of record with the town, a third-party engineer's report specifically to the parking. But before I jump into that report, I'd like to show this is a comparable of other Costcos in North Carolina's number of parking spaces. So I'll start out with the top three because those are the closest to Garner. So Raleigh, that's the one at Wake Forest and Six Forks. That has 711 parking spaces. Apex has 618, and then Durham has 690. Skipping down to the average parking count for North Carolina for Costco is 667. Our site is 721. Couple of things I do want to note as well is that we are in a watershed here. We're in the Swift Creek watershed, so we wanted to be very cognizant of parking. So we wanted to meet what Costco needs, and we have done that. The third-party traffic consultant who prepared the report, and I won't repeat their full report, but happy to go through it, suggested that we need about 685 parking spaces for peak times, usually on Saturdays, using the manual. One question that I do want to address is, well, what about the square footages of each of these Costcos? And that is absolutely correct. They do vary slightly. Most of that is not due to specific operations in terms of what customers experience. It's more behind the scenes. So where do they put some of their mechanical units that in our newest, latest prototype, which is 155,000 square foot store we're here presenting tonight, enclosed some of those mechanical units? Also, where do they put their shopping carts? Are those in an alcove? Are they in a breezeway? And then how does that square footage get accounted for? We've also changed the entry door. Instead of it being camfard on the Costco, it is now a true rectangle or square entryway. So that changes the square footages, but they're all very similar. So we are at 4.6 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of the store square footage. Jump to the specifics of the Chick-fil-A parcel. Parcel four, we have made a few modifications that was suggested by the planning board to include improved ingress, primarily an egress. Chick-fil-A has done a phenomenal job adapting to their drive-through, as I think we've all experienced, and they've continued to improve it. They have an internal task force that really focuses on how do we get our customers in and out safe and fast as possible. And so we did create the first entry. As you come in off of our access road on the left side, is a one-way in with only one way going throughout that drive aisle. But prior, we had kind of a lane coming out that way, and we were a little bit concerned, or it was brought to our attention about some concerns with traffic flow. So we made that adjustment. We also made some adjustments as you enter the drive-through. We've also have an expanded canopy, and I'll get into some elevations that show that. That's for the Chick-fil-A team members to take orders undercover. It's a permanent structure. We may have seen some other Chick-fil-A's in other communities that have temporary tents to keep their team members out of the elements. Here, this will be a permanent structure that will match the building, and I will show that shortly. As Stacy mentioned, this is an all-masonry building. We are also using the same colors, very similar materials to the Costco. And we will continue the same architectural palette throughout the remaining three out parcels. Gives you a perspective, a little bit of an elevation perspective. I thought it was important to note the outdoor seating. We're big proponents of outdoor seating. That helps animate the shopping center, bring people there, which is important to us. This starts to get you the glimpse of the covered canopy in the drive-through in the lower right-hand corner. It's the details of that canopy. You can see where we also, very similar to the canopy columns of the fuel center, we have the same column with brick around it here. Jump back one more, just to show you on the canopy. They also have fans. All the mechanicals of those, in terms of the wires and things like that, are very well hidden. Up in, underneath the canopy, there's also heaters under there to provide for the best experience for their team members and their customers. So with that being said, be happy to answer the questions or address any of your specific questions to our experts that are available to speak.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Priester. And so if I'm understanding, y'all, your presentation is basically the main one. And if there are questions for the experts, they're available to do so. They're not planning to make a formal presentation at this time. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll go to council now with any questions, comments. I'll start with Mr. Matthews for any questions.
It's going to be a fantastic project. I think it's going to do very, very well out there. Great to see it, and Garner's grown, and it's going to be a very important part of it. And I'm glad that the planning board unanimously approved it. That's always a good thing. And I don't have anything specific right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Priester, thank you for giving us the information about parking. That's helpful, having been at the one at Wake Forest on a Saturday morning just a few weeks ago. I thought I was going to get a shuttle service to get to the front door. But they do a lot of business, and they're very business, of course, on the weekends. So I appreciate y'all providing that information and being prepared. Appreciate the work that you've done on 1010 also, making those improvements. And also, your presentation was a very good and detailed presentation. Also showed the 1010 along when 540 is done, and how to take some of that traffic off of that for people who are going to work or going to wherever they may be going, but to take traffic off 1010, and take traffic off Highway 15, Garner, et cetera, et cetera. But appreciate you showing that information.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Ms. Behringer?
I appreciate the presentation very thorough and informative. And now I also understand why I got stuck in traffic on 1010 trying to get across over to Johnson Pond Road. That was, I was unaware that that was going on, but quite a bit of work out there. So now I feel better about it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Dellinger, I recognize you at this time.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, only just a few comments. Reiterate some of what my colleagues have said. I appreciate all the improvements with the signal lights on 1010, the landscaping, the outreach. Like Mr. Matthews said, this is the right project for the right place. It's going to generate a lot of revenue for the town. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Vance?
I just echo what the, my fellow counsel has already said.
I just echo what my fellow counsel has already said. Good presentation, detail needed for the area. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. No other questions? Let's see, is anybody else planning to testify for the applicant? Ms. Gibson, did you have the names of some other person who wanted to testify that may or may not be affiliated with the applicant?
Mr. Sorrell.
Okay. If you would please, sir, just come and state your name and address, and we'll hear your testimony.
My name is Charles Ray Sorrell. S-S-O-R-R-E-L-L. 10029 Fanny Brown Road, Raleigh NC 27603. And I am a co-owner of property adjoining this project on the north side and the west side. And my question is, when the sewer is put in, is it gonna be stubbed for adjoining property?
Okay. That's a question I can't answer, so I'll call on, let me see, does the applicant care to respond to that?
Town engineer Johnson is on.
Oh, okay.
He may be the best person to respond to that.
All right. Mr. Johnson, if you can respond, that would be helpful.
I'll do my best. Good evening, council. I have not seen this plan as far as where the utilities are stubbed, but obviously every project that is installed for the town of Garner is overseen by the city of Raleigh, and Raleigh's regulations always require that any property developed extends sewer upstream to properties that are upstream of it. So if the property to the north and west is upstream of the Costco property, then this would require some sort of extension to those properties. But we can go in and confirm that.
Okay. That's good enough for me.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Were there any other persons who signed up to speak, Ms. Gibson?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there persons in the audience who came to speak who forgot to sign up? Okay. Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Field, do you have a question? No? Okay. All right. I believe I'm ready to close the public hearing and ask for a vote. So at this point in time, we will close the public hearing. And council, are you ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, in regards to CUP SP 1927, the Rand Village commercial site, I move that the council accept the staff's statements regarding plan consistency in section five of this report as our own and found the application meets the 10 permit criteria, section 3.14. D. Therefore approving, approve, excuse me, CUP SP 19-27, the Rand Village commercial site.
I'll socket.
Thank you very much, Ms. Singleton, and seconded by Mr. Matthews and/or Ms. Behringer. We'll credit Mr. Matthews with that, I guess. Okay. Motion is properly before you. Any other questions or comments before I call for a vote by council? Hearing and seeing none. Okay. Council, if you approve this motion, vote aye. If you are opposed, vote no. And I'll ask Ms. Gibson to call the roll.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, council. It's approved unanimously, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here and for your time. Good presentation, and we look forward to having you join our commercial businesses here in sort of the outreaches of our town, I guess you'd say, for sure. So welcome. All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you very much. All right. I'm gonna go now to the next item of our agenda under new and old business, and the first item here has to do with a presentation from Mr. Roy Lance, approval of funding agreement for schematic design of fire station number five. So, Mr. Roy Lance, the floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. We are here tonight to talk to you about the first step in the process to design and ultimately build what will be fire station number five. And this is an opportunity to do this in partnership with one of our other municipalities and the county EMS as well. So there needs to be a little bit more work that goes into how we do the design and requires an agreement. So that's what we're here to talk about. And I want to give you a quick overview of the, I mean, I know you're generally familiar with the project, but a quick overview of the agreement and why we're doing, why we're approaching it this way, and then we'll get into the details of what's in the memorandum of understanding and how we were proposed to pay for the work. This is actually very timely that we just had that other item before us, because as you'll see when we get to the next slide with the map, this is a rapidly growing part of town where we need this fire station in the 401-10-10 corridor, which is, you know, exactly where this previous project was just approved tonight. And as the area is growing, it's increasingly difficult for Garner Fire Rescue to provide the service, the response, at the response time that they like to provide in that area. And so we know, because of the growth that's coming, we need a fire station in that area. And Wake County EMS is in a similar situation. You know, they have to respond to growth and coverage areas, just like the fire department does, and they also need a station in that area. And this is also the part of town where the Garner town limits abut the Fuquay town limits, and the growth isn't stopping at our side of the line. And so, you know, Fuquay is in the same situation as well. It's a little bit more complicated with Fuquay, though, because they have growth, well, like all of us, they have growth happening in multiple parts of town, but they have other parts of their municipality that also need a fire station to accommodate growth, and so they have at least one and possibly two other fire stations that they have to balance, you know, which is the highest priority if you don't have enough money to build them all at the same time. So they're interested, but they may or may not decide to participate on the same schedule as the rest of us. So since everybody's interests line up pretty well together, all those parties have agreed that in concept, it would be ideal if we could create, if we could jointly plan a station that would accommodate both fire departments, both municipal fire departments and Wake County EMS, and there'd be some efficiencies and some cost savings in doing that. Brings with it some complexity, though, because that's a lot of people in the mix, but we think it would be beneficial if we could do it. As a result, we need to bring forward this agreement so that we can all jointly work on the design, and then after this first phase, the schematic design is done, each party will have the opportunity to decide whether they are still in or whether they need to bail out. And that particularly for Fuquay, that they might need to be out for now with the hope of coming back later, and because they've done some preliminary planning, it would be easier to accommodate that in the future. So, quick overview, this property is here on your map highlighted in red, just as an orientation. This is Fayetteville Road 401, and this is 10-10 Road. So this is exactly the area you were just looking at now, the multifamily portion of the Rand Village project, where these parcels here, and then the Costco Chick-fil-A retail part of the property was right here. So just to orient you where you're talking about. And the property itself for the future fire station is on Caddy Road, which is this road right here. Now, getting into a little bit about the memorandum of understanding itself, the scope of work, what we're talking about for this first phase is basically schematic design, but spelling that out more specifically, that would be the site analysis, which is, you know, survey, environmental assessment, things like that, some preliminary architectural work about who, what functions need to occur in this building, and how much space each function needs, and whether they should be, how important it is that they be next to one another within the building. Some site planning work. There's a lot of slope on this property, so there will be some complexity to figuring out how to orient everything on the site and what sort of work is needed to accommodate it. They'll also do some preliminary floor plans and elevations, so that you can get a sense of what the building would look like when it's complete, and they'll do some cost estimates. And the idea is that we get this information done relatively quickly because this is a potential bond project for us, and so we want you guys to have as much information as you can by the time you gotta make bond decisions. Wake County has a department, the facilities, design, and construction department that does this sort of thing for all sorts of county functions, and has done this for multiple fire stations before and EMS stations, so they have a lot of expertise in this area. So they would serve as the project manager, and they would be the ones that would hire the consultant and coordinate all that. But they would involve, you know, the county and both towns would all be equal partners, such as Wake County would be the one coordinating it. So they would, of course, include us in the design, and the town actually owns, through GEDC, owns the Caddy Road property. So we would have to coordinate access to the site for consultants and, you know, people that need to get on the site to do the schematic design work for us. When that, all that work is complete, we would come back. It would be presented to you all, it'd be presented to the Fuquay board and Wake County, and each board has a chance to decide whether they want to continue or not. The ultimate ownership of the site will be worked out later, as will the land acquisition costs that need to be reimbursed, because until we know whether this is a three-party arrangement or a two-party arrangement, there's not a lot of point in sorting out how the ownership would work. So that's, that would be in another phase of the agreement. The budget for this project is $130,000. The idea is that, you know, based on some preliminary work, we have a rough idea what the square footages would be for each of the parts of the building and the uses of the building, and so it's intended to be split up roughly by that square footage until we get further into it and can come up with a more precise way of allocating the cost. And so based on the preliminary square footage, the EMS portion is about 20%, and the fire portion is about 80%, and the fire portion would be split between Garner and Fuquay. So the town of Garner would pay 40%, which is $52,000. Fuquay, the same, and Wake County EMS, half that to line up with the percentages. As we go on and we get a more precise plan with more details, you know, in a future phase, we could, we would adjust the cost split based on what the numbers show as we go. And we have money that we can use to pay for this. You all may remember that as a part of the budget process, we set aside $200,000 that would go to consultant studies and things that we needed to do to prep, to bring you information for the bond, so we could get you as good information as we could. So we're proposing to take that $52,000 out of the $200,000 that's allocated for that purpose. So that's how we would pay for it. This is something that ultimately, in theory, could be reimbursed in a bond if we decided to do that, but we, at the moment, we have a source of funds to pay for that, so we can make that decision later. What we're asking for you to do tonight is to approve the agreement and authorize the town manager to sign the memorandum of understanding, but subject to two conditions. One is that the town attorney would have the final say on, you know, finalizing the terms of the agreement, and that's important because we're the first one to approve it, and we still, you know, Fuquay has to approve it still, and Wake County has to approve it still, and everybody is generally in agreement on the terms, so the agreement would look very much like this, but there could be some final minor tweaks to the language, and just wanted to check and make sure that you all would be comfortable delegating anything minor that could be worked out at the staff level. If there were anything significant that involved, you know, it was gonna cost more money, or it was gonna change a meaningful aspect of the agreement, we would bring it back to you. But in an effort to kind of kick this off and get it moving so that we can get some information in time for bond decisions, we were hoping that we could go ahead and get you all to approve it tonight with that condition, and then with the other condition being that we wouldn't actually execute the agreement until it's been voted on by all the parties. But again, not everybody's having their meeting on the exact same schedule as us, so we would wait to make sure it was officially approved by Wake County and by Fuquay as well. And so if you are comfortable with those two conditions being added as part of the motion, then we would like for you all to approve the meeting, I mean, sorry, approve the MOU tonight. And that is all I have. Happy to answer questions. Chief Poole with the fire department is on virtually, and so if you have a question for him, we'd be happy to, I'm sure he could address that for you as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roy Lance. And yeah, we'll go to council this time. I'll start with Mr. Matthews over here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hodge took me out to Caddy Road, driven by it all my life, and didn't realize Caddy Road was there, but it's a perfect location for the station, obviously, and with the, all the major building going, not only commercial, but with residential and condominiums, the growth out there, the 440 Southern Loop, which is heavy EMS as well as the fire department. This is a prime location. I'm just glad we own the property. It couldn't have been any better. My question is that will Fuquay, if they for some reason don't move as fast as we do, do we still move forward on this thing and not let them hold us up, or?
We, you know, we want to be a good partner with them, so we want to try to balance giving them a reasonable amount of time to make their decision, but still keep it moving so that it can meet our schedule. They are currently planning on, they have a, I talked to their town manager about this the other day, they have a council retreat in January, and so they want to discuss that, not so much the schematic design, but the bigger issue of how they might prioritize the various fire stations that they're weighing at their council retreat, and then take action immediately after that for this item. So they're on track to approve this, as well as Wake County is too, in late January or the first meeting in February, but I think we'll be poised to get it going quickly after that, and we're comfortable with that. If there's, you know, if there's a delay beyond that, I think we could look at going it alone, or, you know, with just the county, but I feel confident that they'll get back to us.
Well, they actually store trucks, have trucks, apparatuses in this for their...
For Fuquay?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if they do decide to move forward with it, yeah, that's the idea. They would have a dedicated bay that would have a truck there.
And this will be a Garner Fire Station number five?
Yeah. We would consider it station number five. Of course, they will have a different numbering scheme, I guess, on their end, so we'd have to figure out what we would call it. But yes, we've been referring to it as station number five.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I encourage us to move forward on this thing because there's a big need out there, and having served in the fire department, if any of those, that new building we approved caught fire, or any of those condominiums caught fire, and it was at 5:00 in the afternoon, based on what I've seen with traffic and going on out there, they'd have a difficult time getting to it, and this is a great location. So I would encourage us to move forward on it as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. I'll recognize Mr. Singleton at this time.
Yes, Mr. Roy Lance, based on what's in the MOU, it talks about the project overview. This is approximately 18,000 square foot building, and you said, based off the presentation, approximately Garner would be responsible for 40%, Fuquay 40, and Wake County 20, roughly.
Yeah, roughly.
They also mentioned, as Mr. Matthews asked about Fuquay's, if they don't initially are part of the project, it can be designed to be a 15,400 square foot project, and then the Fuquay space can be added on.
Yes.
And the additional bay can be added on.
Yeah, that's right.
Based off the information I'm sitting here reading.
Yeah, that's right. Either they'll decide that they're in from the beginning and will build it larger to start, or if not, then we will plan for a future addition, but it will be the reduced square footage to start and then add on later.
Yeah, that's all I have for now. This is complex, working with three different parties, but like Mr. Matthews said, we need to keep the ball rolling. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. I'll go to Ms. Behringer.
I'm just really glad to see this project coming to the front now. It's been, the need has been great, and it's been there for quite a long time, and it's been, as most projects, taken a while to get to this point, but I'm happy to see that we have partners and that we are seeing a way forward more quickly than we have been.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few questions about the scope and sort of scope creep. In section one... In Section 1, Purpose and Scope, ostensibly what we have is an agreement to do the schematics and construction drawings and all that kind of stuff, but there seems to be a lot of mention of conditions, of the relationship stuff after the fact, that I think confuse, they make the MOU a little more complex than it needs to be. And kind of in keeping with that, I have questions about in Section E, G, and H, it says, "In the event that the parties decide," and I guess my question then is, is that all three parties have to agree? Is it two of the parties and not all three? And if all three don't agree, you know, what happens then? I think some of those sections are really related to ownership, and I think the MOU in later places says that it can be, the MOU can be expanded after, you know, at a later date. I think some of this language is too complicated for this early in the process. So I'd actually like the attorney to look at taking out Sections E, G, and H in Section 1, we have a lot of, again, lack of clarity. Under Section 2, I have a question. Under General Conditions, Section C, Project Overview, that's the first sentence, but it says Exhibit B with three, and then it has in parentheses, "Four full apparatus bays along with related site per." Is it three or is it four bays?
Yeah, that's a typo. I think it, well, or it's confusing, I agree. It would be, we have to finish the schematic design to know for sure, but I think the preliminary thought is if Fuqua is involved as well from the beginning, it would be four, and if they're not, it would be three.
Okay. And that goes to the next part, that future expansion space, where Fuqua has the right to opt to do something later, which would change the scope and scale of the building itself. And so my question is, how long do they have to make that decision? Are they going to wait till we're in the design phase, or that, when does that end for them to be able to make a decision whether they're in or out? I guess my bigger question is, what is Fuqua, other than a little bit of money on the front end, what are they contributing to this project for the design and schematic part?
They are, I mean, that's, they have, everybody is contributing the same, you know, the 52, 52, 26, to get to the end of schematic design, and then everybody has to decide whether they're still in or out. So Fuqua, in answer to the first question, Fuqua has till the end of schematic design, plus we all have, I think, 45 days from the time it's presented to each governing board to make a decision. So that's answering part one. I'm sorry, did you have...
So we would go all the way through the schematic design, and then Fuqua could say, "Ah, we'll just wait till later"?
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, they could. I mean, any of us could say we didn't want to, I mean, you know, maybe we get through and look at the costs of the project and say, "We don't want to do it." The agreement, I think, is intending to not lock anybody in until we get far enough along in the design to see what, you know, what the possibilities are.
I'm not really familiar with the process, but if you go through and do your schematic design, haven't you already decided what you're building?
Yeah, I think it's more a question of timing, you know, is, for Fuqua, EMS, it definitely needs a station, and they are ready to go. Garner is, I mean, you know, we would all have to make sure we could work out the details of financing it and whatnot, but, so the two of the three parties are definitely, I'll say definitely, it's your decision, but my guess is two of the three parties would definitely be moving forward. So really, it's just a matter of whether Fuqua wants to move forward now or later, but either way, they want the building designed in a way that they could buy in later, and it doesn't cost us a significant amount of money to design it that way. The cost, you know, the extra cost from partnering with Fuqua is if they decide to build it, but then, you know, if they're going to build it later, then that's on their dime, so that we would have to work out the formula for, you know, the approach for how they would pay into that.
So I guess that goes to my other question about the capacity of the station that we need there. It's still, there's a fixed capacity that's needed in that area for fire and EMS protection, and I guess we're assuming that that is an 18,000 square foot facility, and so I don't really see if there is a, that size of facility is ultimately necessary to serve that area. Why we would have a condition in here that would allow something to come on at a later date, that sounds overly complicated for a capacity we know we need. Is it 15,000 just for the EMS in Garner?
Yes, that's, well, I mean, these, keep in mind, these are rough numbers that we were using just to allocate costs, but yes, that, I mean, it would be 18 if you included Fuqua, 15 for Garner, and that's our preliminary thought as to what we would need in that area.
I'll pass on to Mr. Vance. So my initial thing is kind of cut out some of this Fuqua wiggle room, so we can really, you know, we want to move forward, we want to move forward kind of confidently in what we're trying to get to, and not, you know, if we have to do it mostly without Fuqua, I'm in favor of that, let's just get it done. I don't like the idea of them being at some later date to say, "Well, we'll just wait for later." It sounds, I don't really like that, but I'll let Mr. Vance have his turn.
Okay, well, and just sort of a point of clarification from me before I turn to Mr. Vance. Yeah, I'm looking here, and I think the town manager alluded to this, so to understand correctly that, well, says, should the town of Fuqua choose to have their designated portion of the station constructed as a future expansion, then the initial constructible building area will be reduced to 15,400 square feet, which would be, I guess, the size of the facility for Garner Station 5 and the EMS if Fuqua decided not to participate at all? Is that...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right. But then the building would be designed so that a fourth apparatus bay could be added for future expansion, okay? Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Vance, I didn't mean to confuse the issue.
Yes, Mr. Rollance, I would just say that this is going to be, but first of all, the project is, the need is there, the need is coming, it's there for this project. I really don't have an issue with it, I'm just seeing the complication that's going to be in the coordination and moving forward, and my question is, who is leading this as far as, I guess, shepherding this process through?
Well, I mean, each entity would have representation as part of the project, so Chief Poole and I probably would be the lead staff for Garner. Wake County has a department that does this, facilities design and construction, and Mark Forsteri is the department head of that project, and he also specializes in doing fire and EMS stations, so he would be the lead for Wake County. And I believe the town manager and Adam Mitchell of Fuqua and Chief Malden, their Fire Department, Fire Chief, would be probably the representatives for Fuqua as well. So it would probably be broader than that, but those are some of the key stakeholders for each group.
Okay.
I mean, it will be a larger staff effort than just that, I'm sure, but...
Okay. Well, with that being said, and knowing how it is, working with different pieces, it can be complicated and convoluted in areas, and the question I have, another question I have tonight is that what you're asking tonight is to move forward with continuing planning to development of agreement with, let me see, authorize the memorandum of understanding, okay? All right.
Yeah, that's right. Basically, yeah, and this memorandum of understanding equates to getting the schematic design portion of the project complete, so that's the idea.
Okay, the schematic design, not detailed design, but schematic designs.
That's right, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, and, well, I was going to say, I will go back to the council members, but I was going to suggest perhaps there may be merit in hearing from the Fire Chief regarding this proposal, or, Mr. Poole, are you still with us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Mr. Rollance captured the idea very well. We've been talking about this project for almost seven years. The original intent was, we knew with 540, the development of that area for the town of Garner and also the town of Fuqua would grow exponentially, and so during that time, we were involved in a recession, and building large-scale projects was not on the forefront, so we had the idea to attempt to co-locate with Fuqua, and so that's what spurred these conversations, and the idea has, we've always welcomed the partnership. Wake County EMS is housed out of three of the four of our existing stations, so we have a great relationship with them and a community partnership with Fuqua. I think really the intent, what, at least the Fire Department is looking for is the commitment in schematic design to talk through all three parties being there, and then, and as Mr. Rollance would say, the decision being made after that. At least from my opinion, where what really drove the conversation was the base space. So if Fuqua, Fuqua is really from the beginning stated, they wanted to come at a later time. Their need was not as great in this particular area as our need, and so our vision was to try to get them to commit to base space, because I would prefer, if we're going to build a fire station, I would prefer to build the base space completely in the beginning. I would prefer not to build three bays and then have to go and add on another bay in the future. So that, I think that's really what probably spurred some of the conversation, was trying to commit at least Fuqua to base space, and then living space, at least in our initial conversation, could be added on later. So if they didn't want to commit to the project, they could add on living space to the building at a later date, but I really would have liked, or like, the idea of committing to the base space to be developed all at one time. I think that's, at least in our opinion. I also would like to evaluate the cost share at some point as well. From time to time, our cost share percentages change, and so dealing with Wake County EMS and their percentage along with other municipality, I would like to keep an eye on that as well. Maybe it would be to our advantage to reevaluate that from time to time.
And Mr. Mayor, that clears up my thought process with what was just stated, and allows me to have a better understanding of what's going on.
Okay, and I could ask either, I guess, Mr. Rollance or Mr. Poole, are there other examples of this type of a shared arrangement currently in Wake County, or would we be sort of plowing new ground, so to speak, if we do this?
Well, the answer is sort of yes to both. We, there is, there are numerous, well, there are at least a handful of other examples where, well, there are many, many examples of fire stations and EMS sharing space, but they weren't necessarily designed from scratch with that in mind. There are some examples where the buildings have been designed from the beginning as a partnership with EMS and a fire station. So Garner Station 4 is probably the example you guys would be most familiar with. Wendell Falls is probably the newest example, there's a new fire station out there that's built with this model in mind. Stony Hill in northern Wake County off of 98 near Falls Lake is another example. So, yeah, there are other ones that follow this model. However, there is not one yet that has two municipalities sharing with EMS. So some sharing, there is a pretty good model for that. This is, this would be a little bit of an extension of the existing model.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, give council one more round if you have other questions, Mr. Matthews.
Good presentation, but I agree with Mr. Dellinger on this, that I know Fuqua has their priorities and they have their needs, and I certainly understand that because they're experiencing growth down in other areas, and, but at the same time, I don't think we need to wait around long on Fuqua to make up their mind, because as you mentioned earlier, and potential of having this thing on a bond, we've got to be prepared, and so I don't want us to wait on this for Fuqua to take a year to make a decision on this, and I understand they've got other commitments, so I'm not knocking them, but we've got our commitments too, and I don't want to wait around long on this, you know, either they're on board or not, and if they're not, we need to move forward, so I agree with Mr. Dellinger on it.
I think, as it stands right now, the schedule that Fuqua would be on to decide whether to take the action that we're asking you to take tonight, is going to be roughly the same schedule that Wake County is on, so I, as of right now, I don't think they're costing us any time. When Wake County takes their action, if we have, you know, Fuqua is still not sure whether they're ready to go, then I think we could, you know, bring that back to you with a revised agreement that did not include them, but as, at the moment, until we get to the end of January or early February, we're kind of on the same schedule no matter what.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Well, am I reading correctly, I'm looking at the responsibilities of the towns, and under responsibilities of the town of Fuqua Marina, Item D under 6 says, "Within 45 days of the design, a consultant delivering the schematic design, scope of design, and estimated cost of the town of Fuqua will first inform the county and the town of Garner in writing if the schematic design, scope of design, and estimated cost of, so forth. Secondly, the town shall confirm." But anyway, that leads me to believe that there are some locked-in timeframes, certainly as it relates to the schematic design, and then I would think whatever they say in regards to that is going to set the stage for what their ultimate intentions are, but maybe I'm reading more into that than I should.
That is true. That's at the end of the process, when the schematic design is done, it comes back to you all, and all three of the parties wanted to hold each other to a pretty high standard of making a decision quickly and moving on, so that no one party was holding the others hostage, and so that's why that 45 days is in there. We wanted every, you know, wanted you all to have enough time that you didn't feel rushed, it's a big decision, and the same, you know, we'd want the same respect for Fuqua and Wake County, but, you know, 45 days would be more than enough time to hear it, spend some time thinking about it, have it come back at another meeting, you know, let you make a deliberative decision, but not take too long to do so.
Okay. Other questions, council? Ms. Singleton?
None random has it spelled out when Fuqua will be involved, but it's just not, we'll throw Fuqua out of the boat. Y'all, you know, we did this with Wake County, with Station 4, so we're not, this is not new ground we're plowing here. That was a county-led project, because they were trying to cut down on response times in the eastern edges of the county, and that was a county-driven project, so the town's familiar with this, try to work with people, is somebody's going to look at paying, whether they, of course, it's clearly stated here too, that Fuqua may not buy, they may lease their space, then either way, they're paying as part of a project if the project's completed. I do agree with Chief Poole, though, if you're going to build bays, the disruption of building, adding a bay on is a lot, I believe, more disruptive than adding the housing areas that they would need, because it's so big, and, I mean, to add a bay on, you're right beside the bays that you're using every day, so, anyway, I move forward with the point we've got here, and it's not going to slow going or down at all to move at this pace.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else here?
I'm just agree that we need to go ahead and move forward. We've, it's been adequately laid out for us, and I think we understand where we are. I just don't think we have any more time to waste as far as holding it up.
Okay, Vance, we'll move forward, okay? Mr. Dellinger?
Let's have one quick question for Chief Poole, because I know this area is growing for Garner, but also growing for Fuqua, and it'll grow especially rapidly for Fuqua with 540 coming through, and if he can remind me again of sort of the relationship between the coverage that station would have for Fuqua, and kind of, you know, it would come, if it's mostly Garner Station, it's going to come at Garner's volunteer Fire Department and Town of Garner expense. It kind of remind me of the balance that happens over time for that kind of service we're providing for the town of Fuqua.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dellinger, I'll try to answer that question, so, and I won't speak for Fuqua, but in the conversations I've had with their Fire Chief and Town Manager, they're, they have a similar area of development towards the Bass Lake, Bell's Lake Road area that is a more higher priority, so this, during our conversations, has been a secondary project. For us, our issue is not only the development of this area, but it's also the access we have from our Station 3 at Timber and Vandora to the 401 corridor. There is, as you know, there's no straight cut through to go to 401, you have to go old stage to Legend Road, and so we have to, it's, there's... And so we, we have to, it's, there's just no close proximity. So our service demand as it increases with this new development is a concern, but we also have a concern of existing service on 401 back, going back toward the, the central part of Garner. For as far as the town limits, generally, when you create a fire station, you create a five-mile fire district and operate on the closest unit response. So our units are operated off GPS locations now. We would operate anywhere inside the city limits or the unincorporated area on our side of 1010. And then Fuquay would operate their city limits on the other side of 1010 and their incorporate, unincorporated area as well. So I would just envision 1010 Road being essentially a dividing line for primary dispatch. What you have to remember is any structural related call typically has an effective response force of 12 to 20 firefighters. So even if it's a fire alarm activation or a house fire on the Fuquay side, we would still probably go mutual aid, the same as they would render aid to us. As far as the units of that station, we already have a quint, a, our second ladder truck we took delivery of that is currently housed at Station Three that were built and designed to be at Station Five. And we'll probably have to have a tanker just based on water supply that we already have. So we're not asking for additional resources. It would just take personnel.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll recognize Ms. Singleton.
Chief, Chief Poole, one quick question in regards to response on add-on 540. The 540 section crossing Highway 401 will be into Fuquay based off, I think we understand, we're understanding where the ETJ is. That's, that is, is that going to be the Fuquay Fire District and then our fire district because 540 will be in the Garner ETJ as it crosses, uh, Old Stage and 50? That'll be the responsibility of the Garner Fire Department. Am I correct or am I wrong on that?
Mr. Singleton, I honestly wish I had you an answer. It's just too early to determine that. We've had several ongoing conversations about 540 and the inner changes throughout our fire district. And I, we just haven't, we haven't been able to come to those determinations. When they set up these districts, they're based on polygons and we're, we're just too early in the development to be able to determine whose district, who goes where with that new highway. And so I, I, I just don't have you an answer for that.
Okay. That's good. Y'all, y'all, we're working on it based off, you've got, you know, 542 years. I know y'all have that worked out between now and then.
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll just say for, for us now, typically our dispatches or how we approach a highway is based on direction. So if a station can get to East Highway 40, then one station goes. If the other station can access the westbound, that's how we operate. So sometimes a fire station doesn't necessarily have the, that entire district. They can have a route of travel or a route of direction versus another station. Where it's just too early to tail with that highway yet.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, I'll recognize you if you had anything you wanted to add, and then I'm going to ask Council to...
Oh, thank you. I think all the points I was going to make, the, the fire chief made them and Matt made them also.
Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly here, the council is being asked to consider approving an agreement subject to final terms acceptable to the town manager, our town manager, and approval of other parties. Is that correct?
Attorney. Yep. And, and the attorney as well. But, you know, it's a, a final review of, of the terms.
Okay. Yes. So we'll certainly have her expertise in approving that. I believe a motion to that effect, if council is ready, would be in order.
So moved.
Matthews. Confected. Okay. Secuted. All right. All parties in favor, vote aye. And let me see, I guess we need to call the roll again, right? Ms. Gibson?
Councilmember Singleton?
Singleton?
Oh, aye. I'm sorry. I just saw the final score of the basketball game. I'm sorry.
Don't tell me, don't tell me, don't, don't say. Recording.
Sorry.
Okay. Councilmember Van?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. Uh, yes. Yay. Yay. I'm, I'm for.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Yeah, too.
And thank you, Council. Thank you, Mr. Roy Lance. I think it's a good positive first step, and we'll see where it goes from here, but I think it has a potential to be beneficial for all parties concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to, I believe, call a brief recess at this point in time before I get to your presentation, Mr. Dickerson. So let's adjourn for no more than 10 minutes. If you get back early, we'll start before 10 minutes. But please come on back and let's keep moving ahead. Thank you. Council meeting over from recess and resume. I'm going to pick up with item number two under new and old business, and I will recommend, excuse me, recognize Mr. Dickerson, our town manager.
Mayor and Town Council, wanted to come back before you and give you an overview of the historic depot contract that we will have with the Garner Area Historical Society. This is something that we've been over before, had a few questions here and there, a couple of things to shore up. And now that the building's getting closer to being completed to a point where the historical society can get inside and start putting their displays and built-in items in place, we wanted to bring this before you. And I'll give you kind of an update of where we are before I finish the presentation. But you have in your packet, starting on 57, a copy of the contract. And basically, the council has agreed to lease the building to the Garner Area Historical Society that was newly formed within the last, I think, year and a half or so, to operate as a public museum. The initial term is 10 years, but there's also a provision in there to, for it to be renewable by five years with mutual consent from both parties. The responsibilities, the main purpose of this contract is to kind of delineate what the responsibilities are for the historical society versus what they are for the town. Basically, the historical society will operate it as a museum, and they'll be responsible for the operations, including the labor for manning the facility and keeping it open and hours of operation. They're also responsible for the displays, the, the building and maintenance of the displays on the inside, the exhibits, and managing the collection. And that includes items that are purchased, items that are borrowed or loaned, and how they dispose of items that are no longer of value or useful to the collection. And there is a whole separate policy that deals with management of the collection, and that is in the appendix, appendix B, that talks about that. And that is, I think, some language that's been borrowed from other, other type agreements like this. And they will also be responsible for maintaining a brick patio that at some point they will likely sell brick pavers as a fundraiser. So they will kind of have a design on that, and that will be one of their fundraising and marketing efforts as they try to collect money to make this a successful venture. And then also, they may do some of the flowers and horticulture type things on the outside. However, the town, we're responsible for maintaining the building structures, you know, the electrical, the HVAC, those type of things. And also, well, I mean, the building structure as far as the, the roof and the framing and just any structural items. And then, as I said before, the building systems, HVAC and electrical. So basically, we're responsible for the, the infrastructure, and they're responsible for the inside display piece. And ours will also include exterior maintenance, like of the grounds, more of the grass cutting and limbs and anything like that. Also, the walkways and the concrete and the decking, we will be responsible for maintaining those items. Any questions about, before I go to the next slide, any questions about any items in the agreement? Like I said, we've been through it before, so I didn't want to go over every, every single page. But if you look on Article Three, it further delineates what the responsibilities are.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager at this point? He's going to go to the second part. Yeah, he's right. We've been over this symbol before. Okay. Why don't you proceed?
Okay. All right. Just to talk about some of the, the other appendices in here. Appendix A is a schematic of Pearl Street, and we have agreed to allow them to use some of that space for office space and also some touchdown space for when they open. They'll have a desk and some other areas in there, as well as joint use of parking because the town still has some use of that facility. So, okay. The other thing as part of this agreement is that the society has asked that they be allowed to serve beer and wine on the premises and within the facility and, I guess, on the grounds of the facility for fundraisers or either social events, things that will help them promote and maybe, you know, raise money. And so you have in here, starting on page 70, a draft that was worked on by our contract attorney and then also Ms. Jones here looked at it and how we can add the consumption of alcohol which pertains to beer and wine on the premises here. And she strongly felt that this should be done by ordinance, and so she has drafted a ordinance here. And the first one has strike-through, so you can kind of see what has changed. And then the, on the next page, there's a clean version of it. But basically, it would be very similar to how the council allows the serving of alcohol at the GPAC. And then the only other place really in town is Main Street as part of the events for the Downtown Garner Association. So this would kind of fall right into those two situations. So they would be required to get, you know, permission from the town and follow any ABC permit requirements and those type of things. And I didn't add, but we do have on teams. We do have three of the members. Ms. Bass, Paget, and Whaley are all on teams. So if we have any questions for them or any, if you want to hear from them, they're available.
Okay. What, are you finished, Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Okay. And welcome to the three members who are out there. We appreciate the, the good work you folks have done to bring us to this point. I will, at this time, recognize any council members who may have questions for either the manager or the other persons. And I'll start with Mr. Vance.
Thank you for the briefing. It appears that the depot has come a long way since the last time I've been out there. I'd say good job to the historical society and all those who in, were part of that endeavor. And I don't have anything outside of just saying, just keep it like everything else, moving forward.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Behringer?
I'm just very happy to see that we reached this stage in the, in the, the process, and I want us to move forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
Just echo my colleagues again, it's good to see the progress that's happened over the past year. It seems like only yesterday it was rolling down the road, literally. So good job. Excited to see what you guys do in 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes. Glad it's still making progress and allowing the consumption of alcohol over there. I reckon when it opens up, we can just say cheers and celebrate. So thank y'all for your work and looking forward to when that, that day happens.
And Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir. Looks really good, and congratulations. And thank you for all your efforts as volunteering, and it's going to be quite a show of place. And across the road over there, we're going to see some great changes, which is going to add to the beauty of that whole street through there. So congratulations, and we're excited about it.
Okay. So as I understand it, we're being asked to approve, well, authorizing a manager to approve the contract and then approve the ordinance, and it's named here, 20204098 pertaining to serving alcohol. And just before I ask you to vote on that, I'm going to, by personal privilege, note that Ms. Bass looks as though, maybe she has a slight smile on her face, recognizing that she will probably not have to be here for a late night meeting as she used to be. Okay. It's good to see you, Ms. Bass.
I bet she would say it's late enough.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we need...
Deja vu.
Okay. Thank you. I think we probably need to do this by a vote. Is that correct? Because we are changing the...
Right. Yes. Two separate.
Okay. So you have what's before us. Is there a motion from the council?
We need a motion to authorize the manager to move forward with this agreement, correct?
That's my understanding.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So moved.
Okay. Moved and properly seconded. Okay. Any other questions, comments before the vote? Hearing none. Ms. Gibson, if you will call the roll?
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And it is unanimous. So committee, go forth with your plans intact, and we'll look forward to hearing from you again, probably sometime after the holidays. In the meantime, a Merry Christmas to you, to you all.
Before I take my seat, Mr. Mayor, just a quick update on kind of where we are with the depot. As you can see, all of the, the decking and the railing has been installed. There's some landscaping that's going to be done. We're going to be doing that in-house as a staff. There's some faux chimneys being installed on the roof now to kind of mimic one of the photographs that we have, early photographs we have. As you've, if you've been by there at any time in the last few weeks, the deep, the caboose has been painted, nice bright red. So that's nice and sharp. And there's some work being done on the inside to the floor. Most of the flooring's been installed. It's going to be sand and sealed. As well as the decking outside, it would be sealed with a clear sealant. And then there's some, some more minor floor repair on the inside. And then they're also working on hanging that large sliding door that was inside the display area. So those are some of the more major things that they have to do. And so I don't want to put a date out there, you know, especially with the holidays, but I think we're, we're within weeks and not, not months. So of turning it over to them to do their magic. So.
Thank you. And other committee members, if you will, I'm sure you would be brief if you want to make a quick comment. I'll recognize, yeah, either one of you or any one of you at this time. Okay. Hearing none, then it is approved, and we'll, anything else from you, Mr. Manager?
Is Judy coming back?
No.
Okay. All right.
Hey.
Okay. All right.
So I guess they're good. I guess they're good.
Good. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We will now, and by the way, I have been by there to see the, the red caboose, and it's looks nice and it's repainting. I guess in the spirit of the season, I, when I went by there, I kept expecting maybe Saint Nicholas to peek out in his red suit to match the, the caboose there, but I didn't see him. So at any rate, thank you very much. Okay. On another matter, the item three in your agenda, the mayor is going to just briefly introduce this and recognize the committee members. As most of you know, not too long after the unfortunate death of our former mayor, Ronnie S. Williams...
on hanging that large sliding door that was inside the display area. So those are some of the more major things that they have to do and so I don't want to put a date out there, you know, especially with the holidays, but I think we're within weeks and not months of turning it over to them to do their magic, so.
Thank you. And other committee members, if you will, I'm sure you would be brief, if you want to make a quick comment, I'll recognize either one of you or any one of you at this time. Okay, hearing none, then it is approved and we'll, anything else from you, Mr. Manager?
Is Judy coming back?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So I guess they're good, I guess they're good.
Good, all right. Thank you, thank you very much, all right. We will now, and by the way, I have been by there to see the red caboose and it looks nice and it's repainting, I guess in the spirit of the season. When I went by there, I kept expecting maybe St. Nicholas to peek out in his red suit to match the caboose there, but I didn't see him, so at any rate, thank you very much. Okay, on another matter, the item three in your agenda, the mayor is going to just briefly introduce this and recognize the committee members. As most of you know, not too long after the unfortunate death of our former mayor Ronnie S. Williams, I had some discussion with several folks, including the Williams family, to talk about some tangible ways we could honor his life and memorialize him. And so we looked at our facility naming policy and I decided to form a committee composed of the town manager and also council members Singleton and Behringer. Committees met on several occasions and so what you have before you this evening is a, I'm asking the council to consider endorsing the recommendation and we would set this for a public hearing to seek public comment if the council is prepared to endorse it. But I won't read all the, this follows the procedure where the recommendation is presented to the town manager and then it comes to, it comes to the council in conjunction with a public hearing. So if you want me to read the recommendation, and I'll be the first to acknowledge that the information contained therein, I think is certainly sufficient to meet the criteria for the naming. There are other things that the lake mayor was involved in, but we didn't necessarily take, include all of those, but certainly I think what is included is very sufficient for the recommendation that we're making. And at this time, I'll recognize either Mr. Singleton or Ms. Behringer for any other comments or observations they care to make, so. Mr. Singleton, anything? Ms. Behringer.
Well, it was a privilege to be on the committee to name, to consider naming something for the former mayor. He, as we all know, this was his heart and soul and we are glad that we're moving forward with, or at least I am glad we're moving forward with recognizing him in some way that will be obviously notable for years to come.
Singleton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, some things that we talked about also in the meeting was, you know, where to place the name, how to recognize Mayor Williams and we talked about, of course, as you come in, where it says council chambers, making a change there, but also doing something inside here, something that, I mean, we're not talking about the simple plaque, something a little more substantial than that, saying it would be the Ronnie S. Williams Council Chambers. And also some type of plaque with the information that here, the justification. And if you read it, you know, I've got it pulled up right now in Mayor Williams' obituary, it talks about all the volunteer work he did for so many years, so that's a combination of a lot of that is what's included in here. So that has been talked about, possibly doing that on a plaque to be included, you know, underneath where it'll stay in here, it's the Ronnie S. Williams Council Chambers. And the quote, he said, you know, his last meeting here, when he said, quote, "Service is what keeps us going, service is what brought us here, and service is what will keep us here," end of quote. So that's something that we refer to also. So I appreciate the mayor asking Ms. Behringer and I to serve with him and I, we thought that what we came up with would probably be, we hope that the rest of council would be receptive to that.
Okay, thank you both for your comments. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
I think that will do it. I guess you'll talk about the comment period?
Public comment.
Public comment period.
You're talking about at our public hearing?
Yes.
Yes. And at this point, we're anticipating having that on the second meeting in January, is that correct?
Correct, which is the 19th, I believe. As part of the policy, consistent with the policy, it talks about just having a public comment period, just to, you know, garner more community support. Definitely, I know your conversation with the family, we have family support, which is one of the criteria and just want to look and see, you know, just hear from the public.
Sure, absolutely.
I think, Mr. Mayor, we also said that, no, I don't know, we had the public hearing, the comment period, where people could send an email to town or we'll make a comment on Facebook would go another week after that, or two weeks, I believe.
Use our social media.
Yeah, put it on social media and try to give them ample time for commentary.
Yeah, so essentially, as noted in the agenda, what we're asking council tonight is to endorse this recommendation and then we'll be seeking a public comment as well. So if council's in agreement, I will entertain a motion to the effect of that action.
They're moved, seconded.
Made and seconded, so any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the council to vote by roll call and Ms. Gibson.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously and we'll plan this for the comment period in January and proceed along with this in a timely manner, thank you. We're at item J on our agenda, which is committee reports. I have one matter I want to mention, but before I do, are there other committees that have met or need to make a report at this time?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. On one, well, on December 10th of this month, the Public Works Committee met and a major item of discussion pertaining to the traffic calming policy. It was reviewed and discussed and will be brought before the council at the January 2021 work session.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mr. Vance. Any other committee reports? Okay, for some time, what we have labeled as an MOU committee or Memorandum of Understanding Committee has been meeting as relates to our fire department and a proposed merger of the department, yeah, becoming a town department and we've met for quite some time. We've reached a point in our discussions where we believe that it would be helpful to bring in the services of a consultant who can give us further guidance and information and we have conferred with at least one other town who knows a consultant who works well in these areas. And in fact, we have had conversation with that individual. So that's just to kind of bring council up to date in terms of where that stands. We did ask Mr. Matthews to join that committee and so he's had some orientation and met with us. What else should I mention about that, Mr. Roy Lynch?
Well, and that, Mr. Vance also joined the...
That's right, excuse me, I'm sorry.
And that at one of your meetings in January, we'll bring back a, you can give you a little bit of an update about the discussions that we've been having and bring to you an agreement with the consultant that you mentioned to formally approve, so you'll have more information and something specific to look at, but just wanted to give you some preparation that you would see that at an upcoming agenda, so I think we're good.
Good deal, thank you, yes. So that's for your information, sure enough. All right, item K is manager reports and I'll recognize Mr. Dickerson.
Yes, you have in your packet the Garner info and continue to work on those items and keep that list as short as possible. Item two, just wanted to talk to you about the council retreat planning. We have been in contact and with the School of Government and what their plans might be in the near future as it relates to their faculty being able to come out and do remote facilitation. We have found out that due to COVID-19 that they are not going to allow that, probably during the time that we're planning to have the retreat. And right now, we have the dates February 10th and February 11th reserved, but they do have some tools that they can use to emulate the exercises that we would typically do in person, you know, things like the whiteboard and how do you, the sticky notes, they have electronic means of doing that when you're ranking and putting your thoughts and ideas out there. Now, the facilitator's saying that, you know, we don't want to do an all-day virtual meeting without taking regular breaks, so there probably would be more breaks than what we typically would have had we met in person. But we do want to confer with council to see if this is agreeable to you or if you would rather wait till later in the spring and see if things open back up a little bit. So that is one option. If we delay it, that would not allow the input that we would be getting from you to be incorporated into the 2122 budget, so we'll still need time to kind of get with you to talk about the CIP and what some of the bond items might be. But that is an option if you rather not do it virtually. So I'll need, you know, your thoughts on that, whether you want us to continue to move forward with the planning for the 10th and 11th or try to do alternate plan, so.
And I'm supposing it'd be helpful to go and hear that tonight as opposed to having council members get with you.
Yes, yes, the earlier the better, so we can start.
All right, so you've heard the proposal from the town manager and he's right, it would be a more unique kind of retreat than we've had in the past, but the dates are mentioned there and the type meeting, so council members, I have you weigh in on that, Ms. Behringer.
I propose that we go ahead with it and not put it off. It may not be the ideal situation, but we do need to have a retreat and we have, we've let that slide for quite a while, so we need to go on and do this.
Okay, Ms. Singleton.
Excuse me, distinction again, we're looking at February 10th and 11th, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Which I believe I've run those dates by y'all before.
Yeah, I'm going to confirm it when I put it here, it's popped up on the ninth.
What days are those?
So Wednesday and a Thursday.
Okay, Wednesday and Thursday, okay.
Yes, I agree with Ms. Behringer that we can move forward and we have virtual meetings here, I believe we can make that work in a virtual meeting.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
I agree as well because we just don't know the situation relative to COVID, how it's going to be next year, so I recommend we move forward with the dates that have been proposed.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
I agree with my counterparts that let's move forward with it and give our staff time to get things together because business has got to carry on and we're going, did you say virtual? We're going to try to have a location.
Well, the facilitator will definitely be virtual. We can still accommodate council and some staff in person, it might be a combination, whatever y'all choose to do, but it'll probably be similar to, you know, this meeting. Some will be virtual and some will be, you know, in person.
What are you thinking about having it at?
We have some thoughts but don't want to throw them out yet because it's, yeah.
You read my mind.
We got a really good place, but we don't know if we'll have control of it yet, but...
I know you're going to come out with a real good decision, though. Okay, thank you.
Was that all you had, Mr. Manager?
I think you didn't confer with Mr. Dellinger on that.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Dellinger.
I agree, we need to go ahead and do it, but just with the timing of the budget and the bond and all that stuff, we keep it going, keep it on schedule.
Thank you, sir, I apologize. Okay, attorney reports?
All right, I still have it.
Oh, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself.
I mean, they're quick hitters, I think. Just want to let you know that some of the funding for the Ackerman Heburn project, the roundabout, has been released and that we've been told that we could go ahead and start doing some of the right-of-way acquisition. And I don't know, is there anything in particular besides that, John? None to add, just so?
We're going to start with right-of-way and we're still waiting, Mr. Johnson's on to hear questions, but one of the big unknowns is we're still waiting to understand whether or not utility realizations will be something that could be a cost to our project or whether they'd be handled by, due, because they're in the right-of-way, so that's an unknown that we still have to learn more about, that we can start with the right-of-way acquisition process.
Okay, thank you for the update, all right.
All right, then the other thing just was going to mention, you know, as we talk about remote meetings and having public hearings and those type of things, we're starting to use some of the tools, expanded tools that we have to go with our team's applications that will allow us to better facilitate remote meetings in larger groups. And don't want to go into a lot of details, but we're able to put people in waiting rooms and then bring them in as their item comes up. So we'll be hopefully using some of those tools in the near future as needed, so.
Okay.
And that's it.
I'm sure as we get beyond the holidays and get into the new year, we'll certainly consider reviewing and deciding what changes we need to make, right?
Yes.
Now I'm ready for our attorney.
I don't have a report tonight, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and to express my gratitude for this opportunity. Everyone's been, from council and the mayor to staff, has been very helpful in this transition that I'm making and making me feel welcome and a part of the team here.
Thank you very much for those kind comments and I think I can speak for the council, I'll speak for myself, that the feeling is mutual, we're pleased to have your services here and look forward to getting to know you even better. Thank you. Okay, so we are now at council reports and so I will begin down here with Mr. Matthews.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing other than wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe one, and if you're traveling, be very careful, stay off I-40, especially if you've got a little car. And, but, hope Santa Claus is good to everybody and look forward to a very prosperous 2021 and it's a pleasure to wind down my first year back on the council and it's been an enjoyable one, it's been a challenging one, but as they say in government, that's why we get paid the big bucks, I'm sure, but Merry Christmas, everybody, and thank you for all you've done. And again, to our new attorney, welcome, you've been helping me out tremendously already, so, and so Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Singleton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the information you sent answering Councilmember Matthews' question, that was detailed information, that was good to have. You assume things sometimes and sometimes, yeah, it's when you assume. So I wish everyone a Merry Christmas also, it's been a little different with, you know, the parades, we had the virtual, we had the hostages on last week, which are, of course, they're extremely talented, it's just been, you know, different for folks, be different for families, who knows what's going to happen, you know, the vaccine's here, but again, we're months away from getting it. And I heard today they're going to have 50,000 of this one and 170,000 of this, that's 220,000, there's 10 million people in North Carolina. Well, I assume, you know, a couple million don't need their kids, don't require it, well, you got 200 and some odd thousand, you still got several million people who need vaccinating, so this is going to be a long, slow process. And then we hope by that time, this thing is changing, we hope it'll still be effective, so thanks for us moving forward with the retreat and how we handle things in the future, we'll just have to do it on a, you know, on the consideration of how the diseases out there, not the disease, I'm sorry, the COVID and the viruses out there. So again, Happy Merry Christmas to everyone, want to thank and mention Public Works, thank them, I turned a couple potholes in last week, they had done a good job, they did a good job with the fall pickup and also I don't believe we've had too many complaints on leaf pickup this year with All-Star. So both the solid waste and recycling program and what Public Works does and that All-Star has done this year is to be committed as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Yes, Ms. Behringer?
I, a couple things. One, I would, would just like to remind us all about the governor's order for curfew from 10:00 a.m., 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. I heard several comments over the weekend about, oh, no big deal, I'll do what I want to do. That is, that is not a responsible attitude and so I would like us to be mindful of that, that we need to all do our part to do what we can to slow the spread down, whatever that may be. And the second thing is that the Fire Department Board has three members on it that are town-appointed and Ms. Stevens has, Stevenson has resigned due to some issues with her personal responsibilities and so we need to appoint, the town needs to appoint another representative from the town and I would like to recommend Stacy Colas. Stacy has been a, what do we call her, a term leaving, non-voting member of the Fire Board, and not, what is she, what do we call it?
Ex offici, or?
No, she's alternate, that's the word, alternate, yeah. Stacy's been an alternate for a couple of years, she owns a, she and her husband own a business on Main Street, they've been involved in community activities for a number of years and so I would like to recommend her to fill that slot and then the Fire Department will have to find another alternate, but Stacy could very well represent our interests on the Fire Board.
I'm going to pause at this point before I recognize Mr. Vance and, yeah, I was going to ask council, I think I sent you all an email, if there are any other persons' names you'd like to have considered, now would be a good time to mention those, but we would like to go ahead and get that slot filled, so I was aware that Ms. Behringer probably was prepared to make a, to make a nomination tonight. Are there any from any other council members at this point?
I'd just second Ms. Behringer's recommendation, for sure.
Okay, okay. So hearing no other nominations then, I believe by unanimous consent, we can approve, do we need to take a formal vote, do you think, or?
Yes, you should probably take a formal vote.
Okay, all right. So hearing no other nominations and I guess we should do that by roll call, is that right? Yep, okay. So that matter is before the council at this time to nominate Ms. Stacy, what was her last name, Colas?
Colas.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Gibson?
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, so that's approved and... Okay, thank you all, so that's approved, and I don't know if Ms. Gibson or who will be in touch to let her know that she can, I guess, begin service pretty immediately, is that correct?
Her next meeting would be the second week in January.
Okay, I think it would be well to arrange to have her come in, I'd like to meet her and maybe go with the town manager and have a little discussion about her committee assignment and responsibilities, that'd be good, okay. All right, let's do that. All right, Mr. Vance, council report.
Yes, I just want to say that to the, to the staff and everyone, thank you for your hard work and responsibility relative to the concerns of the citizens that I came before you with, and just put a shout out to the Public Works as well for their diligence in getting things done, and this is, instead of repeating everything that's been said, this has been a very different year, just say for everyone here to remain safe, protect yourself at all times and protect others, and I hope and I pray that you all have a very Merry Christmas. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Dellinger, I'm not going to leave you out, sir.
Everyone has said everything, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, it's been a great year, been a hard year, challenging year, but it's been a pleasure, I think we've made a lot of great progress in some challenging conditions, just everybody stay safe and have a Merry Christmas.
Okay, thank you very much, all of you, and I would just say, one of the things to become a part of Christmas for my wife and I is usually to try to have a little gathering of the, a social gathering of the town council and a couple of other people over at our house, obviously, we haven't done that this year, so we've, we missed that opportunity, but perhaps we can have that next year, and I would say to all of you, thank you for the good work you have done, and then I would say, all of you, yes, I echo what council members have said about being safe at Christmas time, and I would certainly say that to our citizens at large, and as Ms. Behringer's already noted, the governor's mandates are still very much in effect, and we as a town fully expect our citizens to be aware of those and to comply accordingly, not only because it's mandated, but because it's for the safety and good of all of our citizens, so in the process of doing that, you'll be helping everybody to have a, have a nice Christmas. So with that, I believe we need to go into closed session at this time, so I will hear a site on that, and we will move to that last item on our agenda.
Mayor, I move that we go into closed session pursuant to N.C. General Statutes, Section 143, 318, 11, Subset A, Subset 5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiation, excuse me, negotiating position regarding such real estate.
Thank you, is there a second?
So I could...
Okay, Mr. Matthews, seconded, okay. Okay, council, I'm ready for you to vote by roll call again, so Ms. Gibson, if you will.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Thank you so much. I'm going to declare that we are going into closed session at this time. Thank you. Okay, I declare that we're back in regular session, the council went into closed session to receive a report on some issues relating to property acquisition, and the council accepted information from the staff in regards to this issue, and confirmed staffs, the direction they are taking at this point in time for, for future action. So with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn our meeting.
Same move.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dellinger says aye, okay, so it is approved.